As is Team of the Year and the other honors listed. Next, Ireland Turner could not be here. He is attending a national conference, but we wanted to recognize the fact that he is vice president-elect of the Kansas Association of Directors of Plant Facilities. And he is the one who was the catalyst to assemble the facilities directors, two-year directors across the state of Kansas. They meet regularly, they share ideas, they identify how they can achieve the cost efficiencies and effectiveness. We are so lucky to have the one and only Ireland Turner. And in keeping with the theme of the one and only, you will know Adam Hunter, soccer coach of choice, was inducted into the coaches or received the coaches legacy award first year, first year, and the threshold to be considered is 300 wins. So congratulations to Adam Hunter. There are many, many things to celebrate what's right with Butler. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Vetti. We will move into standing reports and start with Kylie and Student Government.
Mass exit.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks, Bill. Bye, Charles. Good to see you. Keep in touch.
Hi, everyone. I am Kylie Metzger, President of Student Government Association. I'd like to report that things are going smoothly in the SGA room as we wrap up the semester. On March 12th, we hosted St. Patrick's Day Happy Hour where we provided snacks to students in the SGA room as a little come-and-go event for people to just kind of stop by and hang out. We have plans to restock the food pantry that is also in the SGA room in the student union at the end of the week this week to provide food and hygiene products to students as we end the semester. And then we are also planning a couple big events for the upcoming weeks, which I will tell you about in May after they happen. So that's all I have for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie. I blew right by public comment, but we'll just, we will finish our, we'll do our standing reports here and then we'll come back to public comment. I think we do have one person that would like to speak to us today. So we'll move on real quick to op-staff report is, I do not see, he is at a conference. Okay. Then move us into professional employees. I do see Camille here.
Okay, we can talk pretty loud. The first thing I wanted to share with you all is about an event that happened last weekend. Myself and six other faculty members and one advisor attended the KNEA Representative Assembly as delegates, and that is a really important annual event that serves to shape KNEA policies, which directly impact our profession and our students. I'm really proud that Butler continues to be a visible and engaged presence, particularly in an association that is often dominated by K through 12 voices. One of the faculty members who attended this year was our vice president, Corey Tubner, and I'm going to have him share a little bit more about the assembly and what we took away from the experience.
Okay, yeah. I mean, above all, we just thought it'd be fun to tell you about how effective our delegation was at this year's RA. That's the assembly where delegates from all the districts all over the state convene to annually give instruction or direction to the executive bodies of the KNEA. And over those last several years, we've sort of grown increasingly effective in our ability to collaborate and make coalitions with other folks from other delegations. And the complexion of the thing was finally really different this year, and that is in large part due to the work of the leadership that our delegation from our local showed, especially Camille and Orion Yosly. We should be really, really proud. Those two are extremely good at this, and in the end, that benefits Butler's faculty because we're able to bring about the kind of policy changes that we want inside the NEA. And so it was a really, really exciting event overall for the weekend, and we just wanted to tell you about that because we should be proud of it.
And one thing that I was thinking of as you were talking that we didn't really quite mention is that I feel like Butler has been really instrumental at making higher ed concerns a real, more of a priority for KNEA. So that's something that we keep working on when we, when we attend those. Last thing I have for you today is last month, I did meet with Dr. Vetti and Shelley Stoltz and exchanged our notice-up letters. And so Corey is going to distribute copies of those to you on the board. I do hope that you'll take the time to look through them when you have a chance. Along with each topic, we've noticed for negotiation, there's a brief explanation of the reason for bringing that item forward. And we have also managed to set some dates for meeting to negotiate. Those meetings are going to be April 30th at 2:30 PM in Andover, May 7th at 2:30 PM in El Dorado, and May 9th at 2:30 PM in Andover. And I did write that on those. I'm sure you'll get a reminder at some point about those dates. And with an abundance of optimism, we haven't planned further than that.
Good.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board Finance Committee. Linda or Dave, anything to report?
There wasn't really anything different from the previous months to report, and so everything is kind of contingent on the budget and the changing numbers that have been happening with the budget. So that's about where we are. We're, you know, as long as we don't do anything crazy, that's always good.
Foundation report, we have nothing to report. Our foundation board meets next month, and it'll be after our May meeting. So they actually, the next substantive report I'll have will be in June.
How much did they raise at the auction?
About $230,000, is that right, Tom?
Wonderful. Congratulations.
It was a great, great event. Well, it was, well, it was a great time. Dr. Vetti?
Yes. I'm scratching that off my list because I have that down to point out that we did raise $230,000, and it was a great evening, perfect ambiance. Food was incredible, provided by our own Culinary Arts Institute, and a good time was had by y'all. Just a quick update regarding the environmental scan. Remember, you approved that in February. Forrest and I were able to meet via Zoom with Daniel White, and thanks to the diligent work of Jennifer, we now have a survey list of about 200-plus people, elected officials from the county, people dealing in workforce development. And so we are confident that we've got a great group from which to gather meaningful data. So we will be sending out the surveys in the very near future. Daniel will be reaching out to schedule individual interviews with the board members. And as you may recall, he will also meet collectively with his vice presidents and associate vice presidents, will gather all the data, will identify the themes, and then we will schedule the board retreat. And sooner than later, we will send out some options, so you can get that on your calendars. But it would be a block of time, so probably four or so hours, and we would feed you if that would entice you. So anyway, that is out of the shoot. Next legislative update that also includes a budget update, Shelby. So the legislature is adjourned. It will come back for veto session April 10th and 11th. The governor has until midnight on the 10th to veto any bills, and then they will adjourn on the 11th, assuming that nothing goes awry. We do know what our state funding will be for next year, and I'll go over that in a minute. We do know that there was no proviso approved for relative to mergers and affiliations, and we do know that the Kansas Promise Act was increased by $5 million.
Wonderful.
It now does include private colleges and tech colleges to be eligible to access the funds, but if that had not happened, we might not have gotten the $5 million increase. So that is great, great news. In terms of funding, starting at the state level, we know that Butler will receive a 12% cut. Every college got a cut. We will be, get a prorated amount for student success funds, yay. We will get a prorated amount for BNI and apprenticeship funds, yay. Capital outlay was cut significantly for Butler, but we saw that coming. And then we do have a decrease in what I'll call credit hour aid. Our tiered funding was up because in, well, I won't say it that way. Our tiered enrollment was up, non-tiered was down a little, but because we rely on a three-year rolling average, we're still in the negative, and the question is, what do we need to do to get into the positive? We, the VPs and AVPs are working diligently to bring you a draft budget for your work session on April 28th. You will receive materials in advance of that. Our goal is to get them to you by the Wednesday before you meet on Monday. And we'll bring you what we see as a efficient, reasonable budget. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on where we are with the budget or the legislature, but that's what I know.
And I'm sticking to it, huh?
Yep, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. That is absolutely right. Also, while I'm thinking about it, on the 28th, and you may remember this, it needs to be a special meeting in conjunction with the work session to approve tuition and fees. We had visited with the board. You had endorsed that kind of timeframe because that way we would know what our state funding was going to be. There will be one other item that will call for your action. It is related to the HVAC for the 700 building, and it needs to be an action item, and it's actually in the book because we've got to start now if we want it to be turnkey by the start of the fall semester. Phi Theta Kappa is coming up this Friday. We have some magnificent students to honor. Dave is coming to represent the board, and we are just very excited about that. I want to draw your attention to the activity calendar on pages 93 and 94. There are some awesome things coming up at the hands of our students and our faculty, and it really does mean a lot to them to see a board member in the audience. So check your calendars, and if you can be there, please, please know that it is very meaningful.
Do we need tickets?
Check with Jennifer and me, and we'll take care of it.
So we do need them?
I, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
The short answer, it depends on what you come to.
Okay.
Generally speaking, but just let us know what you want to be at, and if you need tickets, we'll get them for you.
Perfect.
Okay. The one last thing that I wanted to touch bases on, and I gave Kelly Snedden a heads-up, ask her if she would give you a quick overview. This is the coolest project I have heard about in a long time, and you are welcome to come out and help build a bed this Friday. So Kelly, you are up.
Yes, for the second time, Butler is going to host a middle school construction event. The first year, a couple years ago when we did it, we called it Construction Symposium. This year is Builder Bash, and we have 225 middle school kids coming in from the area. We've got Augusta, we've got El Dorado coming. And part of that day, they will rotate through about seven different classes, and they will get their hands on sheet rock. They're going to hammer. They're going to learn with Evergy's going to be here on campus. We're partnering with the Wichita Area Builders Association, with Nice Homes is going to set up walls for us, so it's going to be a fun day, 9 to 2. It's going to be in Andover. If you want to stop in, check it out, by all means, please do. We've got lots of pizzas ordered. We have roughly 80 volunteers right now helping to make it happen, and it's going to be great. Very special, a unique event is Sleep in Heavenly Peace. And through my work with the Wichita Area Builders Association, I was introduced to this nonprofit, and it's a Sedgwick County chapter, and they make very basic beds and will set them up at, at call, like when they're requested, for children in need who are sleeping on the floor. And I thought that was so cool, and I asked them, can middle school kids help build beds? And they said, yes, it's that simple of a process. So they're going to be out there building beds. Our goal is 30 for the day. I need some adult volunteers to help guide all those little tykes coming through. We're going to have about six groups of 40 kids coming through at a time. And Richard with Sleep in Heavenly Peace is very excited about the possibility of connecting with some Butler County entities so that he could, so that he or this other entity could start a Butler County chapter. And I've made two very good possible contacts for him, so we are very excited that maybe it can grow from a partnership later down the road. And the second thing I would give you a heads-up on tomorrow, Cake TV will be at Andover, and we have a reporter coming out to do a story on that very impactful exhibit that they have hung up, and it's what, what you were wearing, and it's about sexual assault awareness, and it's very impactful. So just a heads-up that Cake is following up on that story.
What's the date on the building deal?
This Friday.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
The last thing I want to point out, well, actually, two or three things, they're dates. Please pencil in October 16th as a potential date for an inauguration for your new president. October 16th. That's the date that is a placeholder right now, but of course, it depends on your new president. But if you could hold that date right now, that would be great. The other very exciting date that is coming up is April 24th, when we are celebrating our 50th year with being, with our presence at McConnell Air Force Base. Big deal. We think we are the longest-standing partnership with the Air Force. You have an invitation at your places. If you want to come, you have to pre-register. They're not just, no matter how trustworthy you all are, they're not just going to let you drive on to base. We do have some other dates, but rather than read them and have you check your calendars right now, I will send out an email. We are searching for volunteers from the board to give welcomes to student celebratory events. And again, it matters a lot if you're able to come. So I think I have covered it all.
Fantastic.
Or I hope I have. Oh, one last thing, sorry. Commencement week. Get those dates on your calendar.
Okay, thank you. I, oh, Educational Facilities, Dave, we don't meet till next month, so I don't know if we have anything.
Yeah, May 14th, that's when we'll be.
So, and that'll be after, that's the day after the May meeting, so it'll be a June update for that one as well. I'll now do a, do a quick 180, and we'll bounce back to public comment. I think we have at least one that is interested, so I will read our prepared statement on that front first. The general public is welcome to address the Board of Trustees under the Public Comment section of the regular board meeting agenda. Public comment should be germane to the business and activities of the Board of Trustees. The public is also welcome to address the Board of Trustees during the public comment portion of any special meeting agenda, but the comment special, special meetings should be related to an agenda item of that special meeting. Personnel issues are prohibited from public comment. The board chair will ask visitors wishing to make brief comments to identify themselves and the topic they are wishing to address. If several members of one group or organization wish to speak to the board concerning the same item, the board chair may ask the group to identify a single spokesperson. A time limit of five minutes has been set for each recognized member or spokesperson of the audience to speak to the board. The board will take no action during the public comment period of board meetings. However, it will take the matter under deliberation and, if appropriate, direct the president to follow up with a written response at report at the next regular board meeting. Is, oh.
Right here, right? Yes.
Okay, great. Brought my notes, case of get-off-course. I know you guys got things to get to. I'm ready to go. Sweet. My name is Rodney Demick with the Marketing Department, but in the, right now, I'm going to stand and talk as a council member from the city of Hamilton, which is a small community of about 200 people, 30 miles south of Emporia, where I reside, about 50 miles from here. And we've been going through some difficulties in budget, as you all know, that process, except our budget is very small compared to you guys, about 200, 300,000. So we are having some needs for our water tower there. It's about 102-years-old water tower built in, I think, 1923. The old, you know, hat kind, I call them the hat kind, you know? Got holes in the top, the insides need recoded, the outside needs repainted, it needs a complete overhaul, for a summary. And so we were trying for a grant, and tried last year, we failed. The state had received funds from the federal government, which trickled down into the state water department, and the state water department was matriculating them out throughout the communities in Kansas, and we applied, we failed the first one, but I reached out to Kay Kautz, who I hope is on Zoom.
I don't know if she can hear you.
Okay.
She waved.
Okay, great. But Kay and I met about a year and a half ago. I was walking around campus, and so she had, I said, hey, we, I told her about our situation. I said, would you be willing at some point just to look over, you know, what, what we have? And so when I wrote up the grant application, this would have been last fall, she was gracious enough to peer-review it, and we found out this spring that we received $467,000 from the state for the water tower. And so, so thanks to Kay for reviewing that. Thanks for the college for having a position like that, that we could, you know, do something like that. She just mentioned to me that she didn't spend much of the college's time, very little at all, you know, a few hours, I believe. She can correct me if I'm wrong. But that few hours impacted the service area that this college represents immensely. And we were elated as a, as a small community to receive such a grant. And it's your tax dollars, it's my tax dollars, it's the nation's tax dollars when it comes to the grant, you know? And, but it went to, I think, a rightful cause. A lot of grants sometimes are fluff, in my opinion, but this one was, was helpful for water for the community, for safe water, and for our livestock. We were a huge cattle ranching community, and so in the last three years, we've been in severe drought. And so the ranchers will come in, stock up on water, and haul them out because the ponds are dry. And so it impacts more than just the 200 roughly people that are in our community. It impacts, you know, beyond that. And so this, this was huge. I wanted to thank Kay, wanted to thank the college, and, you know, and to segue into that, to show how, kind of in unison, how, yes, the college helped benefit us, but also as an employee of Butler, even though I'm from Greenwood County, most all my money goes to this county, really, other than obviously personal property tax. But, you know, all my groceries I buy here, my gas I buy here, livestock feed I buy here. And so it was, it was nice to be able to see how, you know, two different communities, the bigger community, much bigger than ours, can, can help each other, you know, if that makes any sense. But I thought that was neat. I thought you guys should know. I know, you know, Kay's no longer with the college, she's retired, but that was still something that she helped out with, and I think, I think that was it. But thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's right.
I got to get to a council meeting.
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you for sharing. Any other, anyone else wish to speak for public comment while we are at that portion? Okay, seeing none, we will move on, or move back into the agenda for our monitoring report. That would be, I think, oh, Dr. Norman.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Kay, if you're still on, Saturday night at my house, we can talk about a personal, yeah, you know, grant, something. That's great. That's my luck. I hope you'll forgive me, I have just a few moments of some comments, and then I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have. You know, I like to include a quote at the beginning. I don't have anything with the multimedia and things, but this one sort of touches near and dear to all of us in the HSBS division. I am so fortunate, and by the way, my colleague in arms, John Craig, Dr. John Craig, is not with me tonight. He's coming back now from the HLC conference. So he's on his way. Called me earlier, said, I'm, I'm hurrying. I said, don't hurry, just be safe, get home and see your kids. I'm so happy to have John, but I'm so, we are so happy, he and I are so happy to have the faculty in our division to work with. Many of them have been with us a long time. We have a lot of newer people as well. But we, we lost one just last week, and we sort of knew this might be coming. Richard Arthur, if you didn't know, died last Thursday in hospice care. He was in his 80s. There's no service or anything that has been planned, but I know all of us in the HSBS division remember him very much as, well, Martin Luther King Jr. said it the best, highly intelligent, you know, he spoke Sanskrit. And I can tell you that every student who went through his class was, felt very fortunate to have him. Sometimes it was hard to get over that hurdle for them because Richard was very old-school, and he, and he expected a great deal. But when they came out, if they got over that hump and came out, they, I mean, it changed so many lives, and, and we will miss him. So it's been a rough semester for academics with a couple of losses for us all, but I wanted to mention that about Richard. So a couple of things about what's going on with the division. You'll note the absence of a lot of faculty, you know, what went on with faculty throughout the year. I told Jackie I was going to keep this report very concise, but I, but rest assured, our faculty have done some amazing things throughout the year, and it would fill up about seven or eight more pages of the report. Know that they are very, very much engaged. I mean, Valerie's Division was a great example. It's a great lead-in to what happens, I think, throughout, throughout the college with all of our faculty. They stay engaged. It was just last Friday on a Zoom meeting with the state that, as I told Corey earlier, I felt many of the institutions were very far behind where they need to be in terms of what's coming up with Corec and all of those things with the state. We are on top of that, and we have been leading the way, and we want to continue to do that. So special thanks to the faculty. I do want to say a special thanks to Amy Bruno and Janet Spencer, who are our two administrative assistants, who do so much work. And, yeah, they're the bosses, actually. Christina knows that. By the way, I wore this tie for Christina, former student and, you know, colleague, so is it straight? As you see from the data, some interesting things here I did want to just quickly point out. Even though we were down as an institution with overall credit hours, our, our division teach, taught last year about 31% of those overall credit hours. That's a lot of, a lot of students, a lot of papers to grade. Corey knows that. Less one administrator and less five full-time faculty within the last year and a half. We've bumped that up now. We taught 32% of the overall credit hours last year. And I mentioned that because it's, it's truly a testament to the additional work that many of our full-time faculty have taken on with additional sections and the work of a lot of our adjuncts, who remain loyal, even though that, that pool is becoming more and more difficult to, to find the qualified people that we want at Butler. I am happy to also report that, and this was exciting. I'm not sure what to specifically attribute it to, but if you'll note, our completers in that third, in that third graph there, our completers continue to go up, and we're very happy about that. We think that's attributed to a number of different things. to a number of different things, the work that we do with student engagement, what we've done with co-RECKing our English, because we're having greater success and persistence with those students, and with OER. And I'll talk about that in just one moment, but we're very happy about that. And we want to continue to see those completion rates go up. And in fact, you'll notice too, some of our majors have gone up, because we're talking more to students about getting a plan made and sticking to that. OER, lastly, I want to talk about, it's on the, kind of at the end here. I didn't, I didn't give you the long year-by-year or semester-by-semester format this time. Suffice it to say, when we began with just the Comp 1 textbooks and saw the significant savings that we were bringing to students, we knew we were going to make a commitment to try and bring as many OER textbooks online to our students, so that we can save them even more money. And you'll notice down here, and here again, all of this comes back to the faculty and the work that they're doing. Dr. Mini Trinari and Judy Baston, who's the director of the library, are working very closely together with a lot of faculty across divisions to make all of this work. And you'll note here, the total number of sections that are using OER was over about 250-some sections, and departments that are using OERs are at 13 now. Five divisions have OER textbooks now. And in just about two or three years, we've seen this sort of exponential growth in what's been happening with OER. But we can happily say that at this point, anyway, our savings just within the English department, okay, is over $3 million at this point, just for students who are taking English classes. We're very proud about that. I don't have the numbers for what that means with 13 OERs across the college, but it's likely very, very big, and we're very happy about that. So that's my comments. If you have some questions, I'm very happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Move on to page 15 of the board book, which is our strategic discussion item. The first one is the 700 building HVAC upgrade. I know Ireland is not here. Someone taking that in his... Oh, he's on Zoom. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We've got you.
Good evening. Attaching your documents, there is a TFI explaining project bidding. Bids will come in on the 20th. And if this project is under budget as anticipated, I plan on bringing it to the board for work session, a special meeting for approval. Does anyone have any questions on the TFI?
What is the 600, 700? I always get the numbers mixed up.
It's one of the fine arts.
Oh, the theater and the...
Theater.
Okay.
Art gallery. Vocal music.
Okay. That one, that one, over there.
Right.
That one.
Any questions for Ireland?
Let's get her down.
It's just a discussion item, so there's no action for us to take tonight. Ireland, thanks for joining in.
Right. I'm going to head on to my activity.
Okay.
Thank you.
How you get a backdrop like that at the beach, I want to know. Okay, we have the move, we have the, I guess we don't have, we didn't end up adding the discussion item, because Dr. Viti talked about it during her comments. So we'll move into board action items. The first one is the Career and Workforce Education Partnerships. That's on page 16 of your board book. Dr. Viti, or Dr. Robinson, or one of you all want to?
We would be happy to answer any questions you have, and then we would be even more happy to entertain a motion to...
This is just updating forms, isn't it?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay. Well, then I move that the Board of Trustees approve the CA 4 forms that is requested, or approve the CA 4 applications to support the process and provide records of adding these programs to our K-Board program inventory.
And to point out, board approval is not required, but it is a great paper trail, and that's why we are bringing this forward.
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion. I'd like maybe just an update in a year or two, and let us know what happened with it and some numbers. Sometimes we forget. It's like, oh, yeah, that was...
I think we are in year two. Dr. Robinson, is that correct? So we can give you some good trend data by next year.
Okay.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hughesley?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 7-0. Next topic for action is the retirement of Todd Coons.
I did not know Todd personally, but I heard a lot of good things about those people that worked alongside of him in facilities, that he was always lending a hand. He was someone that you wanted to work with, and he was certainly dependable and reliable in the maintenance positions that he held. He had worked for us for five years. We kind of knew coming in that he was, this was his last job, that he would have before he retired. So we were kind of expecting it at some point, but he had 45 years' experience in facilities maintenance, and five of those were with us. So sorry to see him go, but happy for him to enjoy his next season of his life.
Patrick, do you...
Todd's worked very hard for us. He'd been a valuable member for our team, and we really appreciate all that he has done for us. He moved over to Elvereta for Andover. He'd been over there quite a few years, and he's just done a really good job for us, and we really appreciate having had him with us. So, and so, again.
Okay, thank you. We'll entertain a motion to approve or to accept his resignation notice.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we accept a resignation notice for Todd Coons.
I'll second.
That is a motion with a second. Any, seeing no discussion.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hughesley?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
The next item would be the item that we relocated from the consent agenda to the action item, and that is on page 70, excuse me, page 51 of your board book, the laptop replacement. Shelby, Shelby, you asked to move it. Do you have specific questions?
Yeah, I just maybe like in the future, if we could have, maybe try to, I'm not saying we're not being efficient. We didn't do our study, and all of it. Maybe some heads-up information and discussion, and maybe see if we're actually using all of them that we need to, and if we could pare them down in the future, because it's such a great cost every time we renew them.
I don't want to speak for Christina, but it is my understanding that we have reduced the numbers out, because context always matters, as does accuracy. Christina, can you provide the context?
Absolutely. I appreciate that question and that request, Shelby. We do do an audit or perform an audit every year when it comes time for PC replacement. We reach out to faculty to ensure that these computers in their classroom are still needed. We did reduce those computers this year. We did remove some that were no longer needed in the classroom. And then all of our staff and faculty have a one-to-one device, so one person, one device, and that keeps down our technology costs as well. We try to keep our computer count at a manageable level. I only have a few PC support technicians or desktop analysts, and it's a lot for them to manage. So we really do try to keep that number at a manageable level.
And are these the laptops that are used by faculty and staff, or...
This is a replacement of both classroom and student computers and faculty and staff computers. Yeah. The initial number was pretty shocking. This is a really good number.
Right, right.
Yeah, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. I saw that, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other comments or discussion? If not...
I move that the Board recommend the purchase of 432 Dell desktops and laptops from Dell for a total not to exceed $321,242.16.
Take that as a motion to approve that proposal. Do we have a second?
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hughesley?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it has been amended.
Mr. Chairman, I so move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
You mean as amended?
Amended, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hughesley?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Thanks. All supplemental information starts on page 80 of your board book. Dr. Viti, is there anything there of note?
We would entertain any questions you would like to pose. After a moment of Quaker silence and hearing none, I'm going to conclude there are no questions.
Okay.
May I say one thing before...
You certainly may.
I assume we're wrapping up, and I would like to take the opportunity to commend the Board for its efficiency. We started late. It is not yet 5:30, and you've taken care of business in under an hour. So you are the models for efficiency.
Hold that thought till we come back. Okay. Page 95 is the proposed motion to, take us into exec session. Whoever would like to make that, we need to include that, that the board members, along with Shelley Stoltz to begin with, and Angela Probar, would also be attending in the, I guess, we may start here, but either here or in the President's conference room.
Is Shelley just here for financial discussion that she's going to leave and let us discuss?
That is correct.
And if my, I may, my recommendation is, you adjourn to the President's conference room. We do have a light supper at your places, and that will enable staff to dismantle the equipment.
Hi, how are you?
I move that the Board recess into executive session for discussions relating to non-elected personnel, which, if discussed in open session, might violate their right to privacy. Include Shelley Stoltz, Angela Probar, and the Board of Trustees. The meeting will resume within two hours.
And I will second.
Jennifer is quite optimistic.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly?
Yes.
Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hughesley?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer, I hope your optimism...